Patrick, is this the PDF or the actual slide? I'm not sure what you got here. The actual slideshow?
It's a slides.
Okay.
That's my dog's name, Freddie. I just, I turned on my mic as I said that too, so it's probably like. Yeah, okay, all right. I called to order the regular meeting, the special, of the Board of Education's special meeting, which was duly noticed on March 17th, 2023 through posting notification to the press and within, in accordance with Wisconsin 19.84. Could I have a motion to adopt the March 28th agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Okay, that was Commissioner Ardray and then Commissioner Herta. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you so much. Okay, um, boards, we're here to talk about the enrollment-driven staffing plan. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Holsman, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'll stand here so I can look at you as we kind of walk through this. Just a kind of a brief overview of what you're going to be looking at today is our enrollment-based staffing plan. And so when I say enrollment-based, generally these are all positions that are staffed based on student enrollment. What I would like to do is work through grade bands and then I can stop for questions in each grade band if that's okay. So we'll do kind of elementary and then ask questions and then middle school and ask questions and high school and then our charter schools and B4J and obviously at the end we'll kind of circle it all together. I would acknowledge that this is the first time that I'm presenting this plan and it probably looks a little different than maybe how you're used to. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge a lot of the people who worked together with me on this plan. Breanna Moran, who is not here today, spent a lot of time kind of working with me and she's our HR specialist, putting together the pieces. Both Chris and Allison worked with our building principals to work with the elementary, middle school and high school. We sat for a number of times with our building principals, talking about the process and how we might move forward. Ultimately, our goal was to try to provide a staffing plan that supported our district goals. And I think at the end, I'm pleased with the outcome and where we're at. I know that this is a snapshot in time and that likely it will change because we know that when students come in September, they'll come wherever they are and we're going to meet their needs and if we need to add or move, we do that at the time. But just kind of an FYI there. So again, our goal is to prioritize this and we looked specifically at K2, 6 and 9. So 6 being and 9 being those transition years and you'll see that. We wanted to provide our administrators with some autonomy to tell us about what they most needed in their buildings. And we had a big task right off the get-go to reduce 10 FTE in our elementary schools that were paid for by ESSER dollars. And the rationale behind that is those dollars aren't available for this next school year and so we had to make some adjustments to that. And then we really wanted to continue to look at this as a two and three-year staffing priority, not just one year and what does this look as we move forward. So here's a quick overview of our elementary and I'll be brief in some of these, but we saw that reduction in our student-to-teacher ratio on all elementary grade levels. So one of the things that we continue to look to do is try to be low student-to-teacher ratio. Our goals are in K1, 2, we'll see at the end of the presentation what those look like in every area. We wanted to try to do a best job of sharing staff where available, specifically in our art, music and physical education areas that where we can share, we want to and where they're going to stay put, they will. We wanted to make sure that we had a place for everybody without layoffs. And in addition to that, we wanted to make sure that we weren't identifying areas of which were overused or underutilized within our staffing. So overall, we don't have a significant difference. We're looking at about 50 more students in our projection models for next year in our elementary schools. If you do the math, that's about four per school, right? Not significant. But what you'll see currently is that we have 195 teachers who are paid for by the district. 10 of those are paid in ESSER dollars, 185 are paid with district dollars. So in actuality, we reduced by 10 and then added five. And that's how we got down by five, but that's what you're going to see throughout this process. This just gives you a quick overview of where our kids are. And I don't think you, one of the things you'll see, there isn't any significant increase or decrease in any of the buildings, right? You might, if you look at Lincoln, they're 297 this year and they're projected 297 next year. Wilson's, for example, 243 this year, they're projected at 253 next year. You divide that out, you know, 10 kids over six grade bands, you know, it's less than two per student. So that doesn't change as much. What changes is the grade, number of students in each grade. So this year, the second grade might have three sections and the third grade has two. Well, next year, this third grade needs three sections and the fourth grade needs two because they move up in that model. So we try to do our best to try to align that. This document identifies the pluses or minuses and again, the overall decrease. And working with Allison and the building principals in our elementary, we worked hard to make sure that we identified where those individuals would go and they all have a place. This is not uncommon to the School District of Jamesville where we have an increase in one grade, one school and a decrease in another. We just have to do our best to make sure that we're aligning those teachers with the places that have needs. And in this case, you can see the reds are the reductions and the blacks are the additions. And so we have, that's where those individuals will be moving to. We've waited until after the meeting, probably I think the date is April 14th, where we will let people know if in fact they have to move from one building to the next. The reason we wait for that date is because at times people leave, they resign or if they want to ask for an addition to leaving the district, we then don't have to tell the person that you have to leave. So we want to wait till the last possible point before we do that. We've had some changes already since we met with the building principals that someone says, oh, I'm going to not be coming back, so then somebody doesn't have to change or we have to have another person go to that building. But in this case, that's where we're at. This is our elementary, we look at art, music and FIED. Overall, we're down one section and the reason we're down one section is because we have five less grades, right? And in the scope of all things, that's generally what happens. So you're assigned, our art, music and FIED are assigned per classroom. So in elementary, kindergarten through grade four have kindergarten through grade five, well maybe the easy ones, 45 minutes, 90 minutes of art and 90 minutes of FIED. They have 60 minutes in K through four of music and 90 minutes in fifth grade. So that's how that's determined. So for every class that is in the building, they have 90 or 60 minutes per week. When you have less classes overall in the district, you have less needs. So that's where that model comes from. So that's our elementary, I'll pause there and see if there's any questions on elementary. Yes.
I understand, Rob, are you saying that, I'm looking specifically at Wilson. Wilson's going to have a plus 10 student increase, but yet they're losing a position.
So it could be a lot of different reasons, but likely, and I don't know, I don't have Wilson's in front of me, but it could be a given example. Wilson might have three fifth grades and two kindergartens. Or maybe they have four in kindergarten and they're going to go to three in first grade based on the number of kids in the enrollment. So when, what we're doing is we're taking a snapshot of the number of teachers this year and then projecting the kids moving forward one year. And there's all, like every year, there's movements within the school. So this year, I might be teaching third grade, next year I have to teach second grade or fourth grade because of the number of sections in my building. The 10, you know, again, I'm not sure, it could be literally opposite what I said. It could be there are 60 kids, example is, in fifth grade and there's 50 kids in kindergarten. That's a possibility where you, you know, those, when you have fifth grade leaves and kindergarten comes in, that sometimes that's when it happens. But ultimately, Wilson's a little bit unique because they are part of our AGR or our title. And so they have class sizes in K3 that cannot be larger than 18. So in general, you know, they're, they may have had some sections there that had 10 and 11 and 12. So maybe they had 40 kids with three sections, for example, in grade three in the TPR model. But in grade four, we're going to have two sections of 20 each. So that would be an example of where in that TPR model for title schools that they might have a change. In grades three to four, that's where it happens. I don't have that data in front of me, but if you want, I can look it up and give you some feedback after the meeting. Anybody else have a question on elementary?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thanks, I really liked this format of this plan. Good work everyone that worked on it. Considering we're, you know, short-staffed in HR, this is, I really, again, enjoyed this. I have two questions right off the top of my head. Let's pick on Jefferson School, enrollment of 258. Do, I think I recall seeing it somewhere, but maybe Greg could answer. What would be the capacity of Jefferson School for enrollment? At one time, we, didn't we have that data?
It was just in that.
It was just the last board meeting, we had that capacity.
Okay, god darn it.
Yeah, I don't.
I wonder what that is.
Somehow in my mind, I think most of the elementary schools were in the 400 range for capacity. Now, remember, capacity was, does that sound right? The capacity is based on our TPR, which is 25 to one or 30 to one. 25 to one, K3, 30 to one, 45. That's what our teacher-to-pupil racial board policy says, we won't exceed. So that's what the capacity was based on and that's not the world we live in. We have less TPR than that.
And I think an important thing to remember about TPR is we don't want to go over TPR. So when we use the term capacity, it's kind of confusing because, yeah, we're not to capacity, but like really we don't want to be either. We don't really want to have every, I mean, it might be great for tax dollars, but we don't really want to have all of those classes at 25 because it's not ideal for learning. It is, so anyway, so that's just something.
Yeah, I understand that, that's not where I'm going with my question. My question is, you know, I'm thinking about, well, I'll just say it. It might be time to consider closing a school. And that's why I'm asking about capacity because I see a lot of schools well underneath 300. Okay, that's why I was trying to think through that process as well. And then would the idea of considering full-time substitutes as an FTE part of consideration of staffing plan? Would that be outside that?
So I think the short answer would be no. Full-time substitutes is a different bucket of dollars. And I think there's probably some avenues to that, but we don't have, that's not part of this plan.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just looking, noticing the challenge program has Roosevelt, three full-time employees this year, next year four, this year Washington Challenge has one, next year zero. So I'm assuming that the challenge is just moving away from Washington and it's all going to be located at Roosevelt.
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, I did, thanks.
Any other questions about elementary staffing?
Okay, I'll continue on then to middle school, knowing that we always have the opportunity at the end to come back to questions. So one of the things that's always a challenge about, or has been a challenge for me when we're talking about comparisons, is using the actual numbers we have versus projected numbers that we used last year. And so another challenge is our middle school schedule. So we have a little bit different schedule and the schedule doesn't change the staffing, but it does change technically the total FTE number in a miniscule model. But when you add hundreds of people together, sometimes that goes a little bit more than others. So the example I would use, as we worked with our middle school folks, we actually added 3.0 core staff. And it's a little unique because in the past, we had a reading teacher that was full-time and so the reading teacher is out and the teachers are teaching that and that's partly where those 3.0 additional staff are coming to. So on one hand, it kind of is the same, on the other hand, it's not really an add, if that makes sense. Like it is, but it isn't. And if you want some specifics, I think I see Kurt over there that could help me with that if we get to that. But we again, wanted to share some staff where appropriate and we're doing that. We've always done a little bit of that, specifically in our elective areas. We don't have any enrollment-based layoffs again. And we did have a considerable reduction in our supervision and travel. And that's a good thing in theory because people are at one building as opposed to at two buildings. So for every building you go to, every time you leave and go to another building, we pay you, similar to teaching sections, to do that. The less we do that, the more efficient we are and people are happier, right? I haven't found a lot of teachers who are really fired up about traveling. So we want to try to reduce that. Again, overall, based on our projections, we're looking at 25 down in our middle school and a difference of 1.34 FTE. And again, I would be a little cautious about 1.34, that's an add. But you know, again, we're massaging the numbers, that's a mathematical number. We don't have three tenths of a person, right? So it's just a little bit more and some of that has to do with where those people are working and hard. But ultimately, what I would tell you is three people in the core are added, but yet we're really only adding 1.34, so you can see where there's some jostling between that. Anytime you're looking at hundreds of people, and this one didn't go as nice on the slide, but you know, we're talking about 113.6 versus 114.94. That's almost flat. And where those come from is sometimes student choice. So in our middle schools, students choose, but there's only so much they can choose in a middle school compared to high school and so that's where we staff people. So this would be an example of our enrollment. And so as we see our enrollment, there isn't a significant difference at any of the buildings, you know, a little bit here or there, but you know, there's not a ton. And then when we look at, here's where our staff is coming from. So you can see that we have, you know, between 33 and 45 staff members. Obviously, Marshall has more staff members because they have more kids and Franklin and Edison's are aligned with what they have. So again, that's the overall piece there. So I'll stop for a moment and see what questions you might have, if any, about our middle schools.
In both the elementary, and I'm sure you'll get to it in high school, but it was also shown on the middle school staffing highlights, your bullet point of keeping staff whole by adding additional duties and supervision. I'm pretty, pretty much going to assume supervision means study halls. But what other examples could you provide to us that by definition are additional duties?
Okay, so great question. Often their supervision could be lunch duty, so an adult spending their time in the cafeteria. It could be, I'm working with a, I'm study hall or I'm working with a small group of kids who don't have a period assigned to that time. It could be, I'm walking the hall and maintaining, making sure that kids are where they're supposed to be. Some of it depends on the grade bands and we talk about middle school. Most often that supervision is going to be lunch supervision or outside supervision. That's the most common. When we have sixth grade eating lunch, all of them eat, I think I'm looking at the same, all of them eat at the same time. And seventh grade eat all at the same time and eighth grade eat all at the same time. It's not likely my sixth grade teachers can do supervision during sixth grade lunch because they have to have lunch. So somebody else who does not have lunch at that time can do the supervision and we need adults to be in that building for that. So that's likely the most common for supervision or additional duty. Sometimes, again, what happens in our schools is that at times, a teacher will have less than a full load. So an example might be, I have five out of six sections the first semester and six out of six the second. Well, one option would be to say, well, we're not going to pay you for a full-time position. Likely then that individual will look for a full-time position and when they find one, they'll leave. And then we'll have to post less than a full-time and that case might be 0.93, right? Well, who are we going to get that's going to come to our district in this model for 0.93? You're not likely going to find many people. So then you end up having to post it at 1.0 because you can't find anybody for 0.93 and if you would have just made it 1.0 in the first place, you'd had a person to stay. So we try to make it what is necessary for us to help support kids in our school. Supervision is often helping kids be in the place they need to be.
I'm assuming we still have a pretty robust RTI program, right? And that sometimes that's an area where people fill in?
Sometimes, but technically we do that in a little bit more purposeful way. So when we think about the middle school schedule moving forward, we have a, you know, what's that, 40 minutes? Flex period.
Oh, yeah.
Of which we are going to identify kids. Teachers will say, Mark, you know, I like your appreciation for math, but you're not doing the work, so I need you to come in during flex period. And so that's an assigned, that's the assigned time that you will be there and it's more of a teaching role than a supervision role, right? So that would be what we would do in that case.
Thank you. Other questions for the middle school section?
All right.
All right.
We're going to jump forward, I think, to our high school. High school is the most complicated staffing model of all because there are many more kids and lots of moving parts. Because in high school, in elementary school, I have math, science, social studies, language arts with one teacher. And then I have, we all go to the same art, music and FIED teacher. In middle school, I have math, science and social studies with my core teachers and then I get to choose the other. In high school, I'm going to eight different places each day and so our high school principals work really hard on trying to make sure that we find that. So this year, we created a model that provided a formula to give principals sections to allow them to help support what they need. Ultimately, we build our sections based on the requirements that students have to have, the math, science, social studies courses that they have to have, and then their interest. And so it's all based on the requirements and what the student selections are. In today's world at the secondary level, it's perfect, there are no conflicts. But we will find as the schedule starts to build that there will be conflicts. And what I mean, and conflicts are often in singleton areas. So for example, I'm in French IV and I have jazz band. Well, if French IV is at fourth hour and jazz band is at fourth hour, because that's the time that most people can take it, I have to pick between one of the two. I can't take both because they're only offered once. If I am in geometry, well, there's probably nine offerings of geometry. I'll take geometry, fifth hour, and jazz band, fourth hour. So that's the complication where in the middle school, it's not as complicated. We work hard on trying to reduce and we talked about our ninth grade kiddos and the transition specifically with algebra. We found that we want to try to keep those class sizes under that TPR. We're looking at adding those additional duties. So in the secondary level, we'll have more teachers who have 0.93, 0.87 than we have had in the other areas, but we've reduced that overall, which helps us be more efficient again. Ultimately though, when we looked at our high school, our high schools were staffed generously and I would say it has been a privilege to work with our secondary principals because they have been really open and honest about how that works. And so I believe we have given them what they need and we still have had a reduction in the overall staffing. When I say reduction, and we'll see what that looks like, but the reduction does not include any layoffs for staff specifically related to enrollment. So we'll kind of go through what that looks like. In general, we're about flat in enrollment, 39 more kids. Probably I should continue to say 39 more is better than the alternative. So we'll keep smiling with that, but it's not significant. When we look at where our kids are going, again, you know, Craig has one less kid and Parker's going to have 40 more and that's today's math and I'm sure by third Friday in September, these numbers will mirror that, but they won't be exactly that. It'll just be where they're at. So overall, we're up those 39 kids. So we blocked this information in general in the two high schools. So the first piece, we kind of go through and what you see in English, math, science, social studies, art, music, FIED, world language. And we just gave you what we currently have and what we have for next year. Excuse me for hitting that again. In some cases, there are some uniquenesses. So one example I would give you is in the English department, we have an interventionist. And it's not 100% apples to apples because last year, the interventionist was in the English department. This year, the interventionist is pulled out aside and not counted in the English numbers. So technically, if you look at English, it's down three, but it really isn't down three because they counted the interventionist last year and this year, they're not counting the interventionist, but we have an interventionist which really isn't an English teacher. Does that make sense? Like it's a little, it's a little like, yeah, it's a little, it's a little complicated. But anyway. So the interventionist would be part of our non-enrollment students. So they're actually not counted in this model, right there. So this is enrollment and if I, at the end, you'll see all the other positions that we have in this district that aren't counted in the staffing and there are a number of them and you'll see that's where that one comes from. So again, the other pieces to this that is a little bit unique is working with our building principals. We have a significant reduction in our supervision, our travel and our overloads. Now, some of the overloads were because we couldn't hire people and we needed teachers to take sections. So for example, if we had a math section, I think at Parker, we didn't fill. So for example, if we had a math section, I think at Parker, and we didn't fill it. So we needed six people to take a point one-six in order to make a one point oh whole, because we had to have the math teacher. So we're moving forward without having to do that. We're saying, hey, we're gonna hire those folks, or in fact, we've identified ways to not do that. And travel is is the same. But when we talk about supervision, we do have a little bit different model that we work with our high school principals on lunch supervision, because we have some challenges there. Um, both Parker and Craig's um would like to have about six or seven adults at lunch supervision. And if you've ever been to Parker or Craig for lunch, you can see that there is a lot of kids, and there's a lot of space to cover. And so the new superintendent, oh, that'll be easy, we'll just hire an aide to do the supervision. Well, you need seven aides for two lunch periods, right? Well, we're gonna find seven aides to do two hours in the middle of the day? We're not. So we want to be able to find a different way to help support that. And so we're looking at different ways to do supervision. Because the only way supervision for teachers work at lunch is if they have fifth period prep right now. And you can't just say everybody has fifth period prep. I need fourteen people first and second to do that. And then if we don't have that, then we literally have our administrators in the lunchroom, or we have paraprofessionals that we can get in there, or we have two or three people. I was at Craig um and in one of my substitute days, and one of my roles was um lunch duty. And I said, I have from here to the end of the, I mean, it's a long way. You can imagine where the theater is, that one person stands over there, and you got all the way to the end, right? Another person stands here, and go all the other way, another person stand. And I'm like, oh, this is a lot. So we're working on a little different model for supervision, because we don't have enough right now in our system, even though you'll see that's left. So one point three-three is actually one point two human beings less, which is good. But we're gonna have to come up with a little different model. So I, I, again, it's the same for both, the process is the same. You can see that um the supervision is different at Craig and Parker. Um, the overloads are left, less at both of them. Uh, but ultimately, uh, this is just the breakdown. So I will stop there and see if there's any questions or questions or things I can answer, clarify for high school.
Thank you for this. I agree, this is a good format, easy to follow. Um, you sent us an email yesterday um regarding the A.D.s and that they're teaching half-time. So it's a three, and full-time is six sessions, so they're gonna teach three sections?
So right now, the staffing has uh the same as last year, which is two sections and what we would call a prep, meaning that's halftime. Um, so that's when we asked our building principals, you know, we gave them their sections. They said this is the sections that we need specifically for our building athletic director. So different than at the high school level, a little different than in middle school and district. So the current model that that is in here would be two sections of prep, and then the other half would be athletic director. That's the contract.
So I get, again, I'm just gonna reiterate, the board agreed to the central A.D. because the high school A.D.s were supposed to teach more. Um, so keeping them at two doesn't qual- you know, doesn't satisfy that. And I feel like, I know that the A.D. role is huge, don't get me wrong. I also know that that's why we hired the central A.D., is to take on a lot of that work. So um I think to saying they're gonna teach two and have a prep, well, then they're gonna have five hours for A.D. it should be three courses, one prep, cuz full-time is six courses, two prep. So halftime would be three courses and a prep, and then half-day A.D. I'm disappointed that that isn't being followed, um, because it was a significant investment by the community, and it was a long discussion around that. And that's why the board agreed to that role is with that understanding, and that's not happening.
Yeah, I I understand. I mean, we've had some conversations about the athletic director's teaching load. And I think that came on before I was here, and we we didn't make the adjustment in that model. What I did know is, I have had conversations with our building principals, and I lean heavily on what they need. And what I heard them say is, hey, their their workload is not less than it was last year. In likelihood, because we have another central person to help them, we're doing professional development. I think the the example there is, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-six coaches uh district-wide, that they're required to provide feedback, professional development, and and support for those individuals in addition to the daily operations of that process. So they were adamant about, hey, we'll give you our sections, part of our two sections, towards that because we feel like we really need them, and that work would be overwhelming if we have to give them an additional teaching load. So that's how I supported that that interest, based on where we are today.
But didn't they have that same responsibility, providing all that professional feedback, when they were? I mean, that that didn't change, like.
Yeah, so the question would be, do they have the same responsibility? The answer would be probably yes, but there wasn't anybody who was probably helping them oversee that role and responsibility. And so now, that's the athletic directors trying to help them support, for example, getting to, I don't, again, I'm not the A.D., so he would be here next board meeting to speak to that. Um, but the way I understand it is, you know, they weren't getting together. A.D.s weren't doing any professional development for themselves or for other folks. And so now they're working on that. And because they're doing that, their day is more full than it was before, because they were just doing maybe supervision instead of leadership, if that makes sense.
And I understand that, and I'm all for professional development, but that, as Michelle stated, that was a really long conversation with the board to hire that position. And the compromise was, I I I know you lean heavily on the high school principals, and I and I applaud them. They have a wonder, a very difficult job, but that's not what the board compromised for, for that. So I I have a difficult time accepting that, that they're not teaching three sections and having one prep. I understand it's a delicate balance, because they wanna do the professional development. But maybe that's a vision that the central A.D. had for them. But then that could've, should've been communicated to that central A.D. that, hey, we maybe need to pull back on that, because the the board was promised, the compromise was this. So we have to initiate this first before we maybe move down on that road of professional development, maybe in year two or year three. Cuz I I feel like, I'll be very honest, I feel like I I was lied to then. And I wouldn't have agreed to hiring a a central athletic director, even though one was probably needed, if that compromise wasn't put forth.
Yeah, so I can appreciate the fact that we dropped the ball last, this current year. I, you know, I I wasn't aware that the the expectation was there. I do know that the the conversation could continue. I I don't wanna put our athletic director in a position in front of the board on April eleventh, when the next board meeting is to, cuz it's not his responsibility to, you know. He didn't know, he was hired after that, probably that piece was made. But we definitely could continue that conversation about what that looked like. Um, I, and he is going to share on April eleventh, a little bit of the overview that you have in your packet about what the athletic directors are doing and where that comes from. And then maybe after that time, if the board still is interested in that model, then we'll have to look at um adding sections, if that's what uh the board wishes to um that role. Again, the sections were identified, right? We gave each building, I think, nine-hundred-and-twenty-something sections for Parker and one-thousand-something for Craig. One section is one teaching period per semester. And so they have allocated all of those. Now, we could, you know, we could add somebody else into the mix. At this time, it's easier to do it today than it is in September. Um, but I would maybe ask the board, just maybe wait till after you hear what's happening on April eleventh. And then if we still feel like that's the role we wanna do, we can, we can make that conversation.
How about the door's been open? I agree with these two commissioners that this spoke. And it wasn't a secret, it wasn't a secret, the compromise we reached. Because I had conversation with the high school A.D.s, and he told me he disagreed with the decision and that if he had to teach more, he wouldn't be the A.D. anymore. I said, well, that's your decision. So it wasn't a secret, this compromise that we reached. And I don't know what else to say, that this was the compromise that this board reached. And the board clerk is gonna be, forward the video to me of that particular meeting, so I can transcribe what was said. Now, I too don't wanna get into this piss and match on April eleventh with the A.D. But I'm restating myself, I need to make it clear, this was not a secret, this compromise we reached to get that new full-time position, which was a big leap for us, to to put on a new administrative position. So my best guess is that those two A.D.s, before we hired the central, they weren't doing their job. That's why we wanted somebody central to to get this thing under control. So that that's just my opinion on that, and I I think this is a, this is bigger than the position. This is, this is about the board directing administration what to do, and it didn't happen.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I think as long as we have a conversation about the positions, I think sometimes we're getting, creeping into the individuals. And I, this definitely at the staffing plan, isn't the time to do that. So if we needed to talk about the roles and responsibilities of individuals, we would wanna do that in closed session, so that we're not, when we only have two that we're talking about, we're probably limiting that. And again, I I understand, sounds like the uh athletic director was approved in May of last year. I'm sure the staffing plan probably came in April, and there was an adjustment made along the way. And when your new superintendent came in July, I really wasn't aware of it, but we messed up. Moving forward, I knew that that was an interest, right? And I just leaned in on our building principals, cuz we talked about it. It wasn't like we didn't talk about that interest. Um, and that's where we, they were like, hey, we, our people are really busy with this work they're doing right now. We really want them to be the same as what they currently are. And the same as what they currently are is teaching two sections and A.D., and one prep, and then A.D. in the second semester. So I think um, let's come back to that after April eleventh. We, and we're not in a tight timeline that we have to decide this today. But if we do get into a point where we feel like we wanna talk about individuals, let's try to do that in a closed session, so we're not uh talking about individual people at at the board meeting. Any other high school questions I'll, um, we have?
Just of interest, you might not know, but maybe um Parker High School does. I just thought it was interesting that music went from four to six.
Yeah, great question, so.
That's not really a core issue, so I was like, wow, that's two in music.
Yeah, so what happened in at Park?
More people interested in the arts?
Uh, no, well, um, so again, lots of flexibility there.
Parker Arts Academy.
Arts Academy um has a uh funding that is uh leaving us at the end of this year. And we want to continue to support Parker Arts Academy. So we shifted um some of the people who were part-time into that, and hence we grew. So that is a reflection of us taking on Parker Arts Academy without the funding that started it up three years ago. So the really, I mean, yeah, that, that's where it is. Good question. All right, I'll move on to our charter schools. And um, again, same format. Um, I met with our charter principals, and they provided kind of an overview of what the expectations were for their staffing. Um, we see a slight increase in our enrollment, um, even with um tagos um being uh reduced. And you can just see where those slight increases uh continue to be at. When we look down at our difference, though, again, we're talking about thirty kids, not significant. Um, what you see in this model um is Rock University really moving from five-point-five to six-point-oh, which is a one-point-oh add. Rock River Charter Schools staying the same, and a rise actually reducing by point seven, which overall is a point-three change. Um, and that's based on their needs and student enrollment um at each one of those buildings. So again, questions at all about the staffing at our our charter schools? The next couple of slides, uh P-four J. The biggest change is that we added a P-four J at Kennedy for this upcoming school year. So Kennedy currently does not have a P-four J site. We wanted a P-four J site on that side of town, and so we added one to Kennedy. We're already seeing um significant interest in enrollment in that area. To do that, we have to add a one-point-oh teacher and a seven-point-five aide, which, because it's a morning P, AM and a PM section. Um, and we added that to our overall staffing plan, but we are, we're gonna see some, I think, positive enrollment there. Um, our P-four J sites are not our employees, but they are interested in 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 some additional staffing. Again, whether that happens or not, doesn't affect us as much. Obviously, we want that to happen, but we are reimbursed them based on the number of students that they teach, not the number of staff that they have. And uh in their model, they would have more afternoon sessions. Right now, some of our neighborhood or our our partner sites have just morning sites. And they would like to do morning and afternoon, but they have to have the student enrollment to do that. These are the spaces where our P-four J is in the district. And the only change you see there is Kennedy Elementary School. So now we see um in addition to that, so that's where the six is and the seven. Um, and then this is the paraprofessional add, seven-point-five is part morning, part afternoon. Pause there before. Any questions on the P-four J? Um, again, thank you to our team for trying to identify a place that we need one. And and um they did some of their homework, and I think Kennedy's gonna work out real well for us.
Just super quick, thank you for recognizing that need and feeling that, like you said last night, it's already full. Both sessions are already almost full, or?
They're, yeah, they're gonna get full pretty quick.
Yeah, and you know, to your comment last night, like, I don't know how many of them are open enrolled, but if you open enroll in P-four J, you're probably gonna stay. So it's just really good for our district overall. So thank you for doing that, it's a really good location. Thanks.
Right, thank you. And again, it, some of it's space, right? We had the space in that building, we could do it, and and we're grateful for that, so. We have a model for uh adding regular ed paraprofessional allocations. We didn't change that model. It is two-point-two-five times the total number of staff you have. And so that's just the model. Um, I I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure that we are gonna change things that have less than thirty minutes. So, you know, for example, if you see a fifteen-minute reduction at a building, we may just say, just keep it. Um, we'll see what happens at the end, but I I don't see us making that change. You know, the cost efficiency of telling someone you have fifteen less minutes, it's probably not worth it. But that's just our formula we use. We have a similar formula for our middle school and high school, so you see the same thing. Anything less than thirty minutes, we probably aren't gonna make any changes to. And again, that's um high school. Um, the next slide, I would tell you, uh, you have in your packet a big, big uh amount of information regards to our special education. And we are anticipating um additional staff um based on our projected student needs. Um, and you can see as we work, walk through that, um, where our additional needs are. Kim does a fantastic job of identifying where we can be tight and where we need to add. And um we support the kids who come to the Janesville Public School District, and we're happy to do so. So this year, we need to add some staff. Some of those, we've already got posted, and we're hoping to get them as soon as possible. Others will wait till um the board fo- fully approves uh those positions. Any questions on the special education? Yeah?
Sorry, not special, I have a para. Can you go back to the middle school, high school, para, the Parker? It's probably on here somewhere, but what, that's two hours? What was that? Is that, cuz they're getting, what, forty more students?
So it's just the formula, and the, and the difference, again, this is where I say it's a unique. So it's just the formula, and the, and the difference, again, this is where I say it's unique. It's based on last year's staffing projection versus this year's reality. Next year, you're going to see what we had versus what we had. But if you look at the old book we had, it was what was projected, not necessarily what was hired or off, right? So it's a little different. It's not completely irrelevant, but it's not a hundred percent accurate.
Okay.
So what you see is what we, you know, one year from the next. That's based on, they thought they were going to have this much, they didn't, and then this is what it is. So it's from what we hired this year to what we are planning on hiring next year is different. But we, I can't say that it's two hours less than what we currently have. If that makes sense, okay?
Um, I just am interested in this, a hundred and seven additional, um, special ed students. And, um, one comment, it'd be nice if the state funded better, um, for those services. But anyway, um, I'm just interested in what, what's the trend we're seeing? Is that a, a normal increase? Is that unusual? I'm just, it's, I'm curious.
So we're sitting at about one thousand three hundred and eighty-two special ed students right now that will roll up to next year. That would not include anybody that moves in or anybody that would qualify for next year. What you see on the slide is the number of services. So for example, a student may be a student with an intellectual disability, but they may also require speech and language, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and specially designed fi-eds. So they may be counted multiple times in the staffing plan, which shows how many services we have to provide. A student may just be a student with a specific learning disability and may just need a cross-categorical teacher to support them. So what we're seeing is the needs of our students are becoming more increasingly complex, therefore increasing the number of services that they need to be provided when they come to the district.
To your point, Commissioner Paul, last night at the, um, finance meeting, the number twelve-point-five million was, uh, shared. We move twelve-point-five million dollars from Fund Ten to Fund Twenty-seven, to fund what the state does not fund in special education on an annual basis. Well, we could hope for more funding, right? That would be, is that hopeful? Any other questions on special education?
Not so much on special ed, but maybe it's just paras in general. We have this formula based on minutes. Not necessarily the utilization of those individuals. And it would be nice to move toward a model that really looks at, how are we using who we have? I mean, I know what we have is based on the minutes. But I also know that, I've been around too long. As I think about this, you know, what we used to have, and it was, the, the paras were itemized by skill set, and then we blew that away and cross categorized. But then it really gets down to, how are they really being utilized? So if some are being used for supervision, um, much as, as you mentioned, the teachers, but instead of a teacher, it's a para. And then those that were hired maybe more recently to fit the true description and profile, that they can help out more academically in the classrooms, that's a distinct difference. So it would be nice to move in a model that talks about those differences. Maybe that is, in addition to, you know, the allocation per student. I mean, yeah, per student minutes, but then how are they really being utilized? Because from our viewpoint, we see that, and we may think that the support is all in the classroom, where in reality, that's not what we see if we go into a building. So more the comment than the questions.
To your point, um, I've had a couple, I've had several conversations with our directors. And, um, I would introduce, maybe a moment to introduce Joyce Greenwood-Arts, who is our H R interim person, who is right over here. So welcome, Joyce. I had a conversation with her this afternoon about looking at our para structure. And the example I would use is, we have a para structure in our P-4J model that has seven-point-five, um, hours. But we don't have, we generally have two people fill those seven-point-five hours. It's a financial decision. It might not be, it's probably the right financial decision, right? To, to make one point out, right? But in the end, we end up with lots of paraprofessional roles that aren't, we're not able to fill, or they turn over quickly because they're not offered a full-time job with benefits. And so before we make any significant changes, we need to know what we have and what we can afford. But we are looking at a model that might help us drive, what do we need? As opposed to just, here's what you get. And again, I think any, everybody would know that there are certain roles and responsibilities we need in our schools, lunch supervision, recess help, sometimes any op, like, we need some help with that. But we also heard a couple of board meetings ago, how effective some folks were working with small groups of kids and the outcomes in reading. So, you know, again, there, we have some quality people who can help us in, in ways that maybe we're not best utilizing. But we've got to look at our structure, and I'll be honest, I, this was a lot. And I, we just, we just said, we can't do that right now, we have to wait for another. So we're going to work on that over the next, uh, year and come back hopefully with a better plan for utilizing our paraprofessionals in a way that will support our students and our people. Welcome, Joyce. Okay, um, title, as you know, um, in, in your packet, um, there is a, uh, document about title. Two pieces on title. One, it's federal dollars. We have two schools who are identified specifically, uh, school ride, um, classroom, uh, reduction. And you see that we have the same amount of staff in title. The one area that I would share with you that is of note in that, uh, document is that the school district of Janesville now has been identified as, I believe, fifty-five point, I don't know what the number is, read the number, F, um, in percent of students who are eligible for free and/or reduced lunch. And that is growing. One of our schools are at ninety-seven percent free and/or reduced lunch. So, um, you know, it's a significant need, uh, in our district. And in spite of whatever we see within our local economy, our, the students we get come from our community. And, um, fifty-five percent of them now, uh, come from areas that are eligible for our free and/or reduced lunch. So if your school is greater than the school average, you then have some eligibility. There are some schools who don't have that. Um, and that is in the addendum packet that, um, you should have at your, at your place. Questions on title? Uh, this is then, um, all of it put together. And you can see there are some additions and, in, um, and subtractions. Overall, we have ten-point-five to less F T E. I would tell you that there are still are places that we need to put F T E. And what I, I'll go back to that. What I would tell you is that, that those numbers do not include school counselors, R T I specialists, dean of students, program coordinator, school psychologist, social workers, reading specialist, innovation specialist, and probably a few more, uh, that aren't in that certified group. Uh, this is just enrollment-based folks. But what I would tell you is that there are also other areas that we're looking at, that we have, um, to preview and review in regards to E S R dollars that are going to continue this next school year, but will go away. And, um, we also have some additional, last night at the finance meeting, we talked a little bit about some needs we have long-term, uh, in our technology. And some needs we have in our capital, continued needs we have in supports in some of the other positions you've heard about, like our work-based learning program coordinator. That would reduce one of those, um, because that's going to be funded, but it's not in the enrollment-based funding. So, uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, that piece. What I would tell you that in the overall model, I'm really pleased with the end result number. So if you look at the T P R summary of what our actual class sizes are, we really focused on trying to have smaller class sizes. Now, this is the district average, and there are a few bubbles. But at this time last year, we had nine elementary buildings, uh, that had hotspots. We have one right now. So we've made a concerted effort to reduce those below the district's T P R. And you can see, um, it progresses what we would anticipate, you know, seventeen, nineteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, through that model to twenty-fourths. It's really hard to give you an example at the high school because there are so many different variables. But it's much easier, these are the core classes in our elementary. So I, I, I am really pleased with where that landed. And I think we put our resources to the places that we needed to. And we were able to, uh, create some access to supply the areas where we're going to need to look at in the future. So I will pause there and see if there's any questions, additions, comments.
So. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Murray and a second from Commissioner Millard. I just want to say thank you very much. This was a very difficult task, especially because we had to deal with, you know, the, the change in funding from the loss of E S R funds. And it's very hard to bring people on, you know, and then make sure we absorb them as, as we can in, you know, where we need them. I also, I do like the, um, the emphasis, uh, placed on, um, on, uh, getting input from the principals at the high school level. Also about where, where the, the, uh, the needs are. And I, because I think that's really important. I think that otherwise, um, a staffing plan sometimes just becomes an exercise as opposed to a, uh, you know, a real thoughtful, mindful, uh, plan. So I thank you for that. Yes, Lisa?
I just want to also say thank you for everyone that put this together because I know it was a mountain to climb. I do want to echo some of the other, um, school board commissioners. I do like the format, it's very in-depth. I like the, how it's categorized per grade level. But we, I know that since I've been on the board, we've talked a lot about, um, reducing class size. So I really appreciate that last slide where the T P R summary is. Not only because we've talked about it as a board, um, because I think we're all sitting around the table knowing what's best for kids and putting our dollars where we know it creates the best results, which is lower classroom sizes. And as a former elementary stu, elementary teacher, I was a student too. I do appreciate the eighteen, twenty, twenty-two. That's very manageable for an elementary teacher with everything that an elementary teacher has on his or her plate. So I appreciate that and thank you for that.
Questions, comments, right?
And this is coming from the finance meeting last night. I just wanted to say, when we've said here in previous years, we were filling the spending cart full of people. And we didn't, hadn't necessarily made sure that the funding was all in place, where you felt good about it. So this year, we had the finance meeting ahead of this to, to say, yes, the horse will be driving the cart. We will have the funding available for executable plan, which is definitely a different spot than we've been in before. Because we always had this question, yeah, well, can we afford a lower T P R? Well, we were able to do it, and we know we can afford it. So just wanted to share that with the commissioners who worked there.
Other questions, comments? Yeah, Liz?
Um, Commissioner Audrey, your comments were so meaningful because, you know, as a parent with kids in the district, I see, I see how those numbers pan out. And I, I just think it's so important that we are really paying attention to that in advance of knowing for sure. So thanks, I'm glad that you mentioned that. This plan is awesome, I think it's really helpful. Especially as you talk about hotspots or, um, you know, just change of positions. It's, it's really important. You know, I may be asked tomorrow, when I walk my kids to school, about, I mean, I was last year. So, um, I think it's, it's really valuable for us to see because, you know, we're asked these questions in the community. And, um, I continue to be very, very grateful, um, that we are being all mindful of the T P R. As I said, I see that play out. I see the difference in my child's class when there are, um, lower numbers. I know what a difference it makes for our teachers as well. But it, it's great that we can talk about this to the community and, and, you know, kind of show that we care about all of these things. So thank you. I am curious about where that one hotspot is.
Lincoln, fourth grade.
Interesting, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, Carl?
I won't say much, I just want to thank fellow commissioners for the comments and the questions they asked. I didn't find a lot of questions to ask, I was able to follow it well. And that's contrary to previous years where we were chasing all over for the things to try to find answers and results. I think you presented them very well, and with some questions lingering. And I think the answers were there. So thank you very much to everyone that worked on it and that. And thank you commissioners for asking very worthwhile questions.
Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Thank you very much. I know. Thank you very much. It's been a few weeks too, you know, so I was like, kind of, okay, anyway. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, we got the business done. Thank you very much. Okay, um, we have reached the end of our agenda, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.